Ladies and gentlemen, we are live on Facebook. And we are here in the City Council Memorial Room in City Council Chambers. It's the City of Mount Vernon for our Wednesday, May 13th City Council Meeting. 7:00 PM start time and our time now is 7:04. Council President Lisa Copeland, the floor is yours.
Okay, if we can start with our referrals, legislation and public works.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number five, number six, and number eight are all called for. Item number 32 is for information. Item number 42 is called for, and I have two add-ons. One is declaring an emergency at Prospect Avenue and Park Avenue. And the second is declaring an emergency pursuant repairs at 435 South 9th Avenue. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Human Resources?
Thank you, Madam President. Item 21 is called for. Item 33, that was on the agenda. No, that's information, I'm sorry. Item 34 and 35 is on the agenda and 36 is on the agenda as well. That's all I have.
Did you have an add-on or was 36?
That is the 34 and 35 was the add-on. I'm sorry, oh, I have an add-on as well. I didn't get to print that out, I'm sorry. That was for the youth borough.
Transfer funds?
No, no, it wasn't a transfer.
No, it's the OSHA. It's the OSHA work.
Yeah. Authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Sherman Carrigan, PMI. That's on the agenda as well, that was the add-on.
Okay. Thank you. Public Safety and Codes?
Thank you, Madam President. Items 2, 3, 17, 18, 20, and 22 and 43 are all called for. And I have an add-on, Madam President enumerated as item number seven. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Finance and Planning?
Yes, items number one is being held. Item number four is being called for. Item 7, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 are for information. Item 16 is on the agenda. Items 19 and 23 were enacted. 24 is on the agenda. 25 is enacted. Items 26, 27, 28, 29, 30 are for information. 31 is on the agenda. Items 37, 38, 39, 40, and 41 and 44 are for information. That concludes my report.
Do you have any add-ons?
No, but we do have items that were held over from the last meeting. They're on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Duarte?
Present and at home.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Here and at home.
Councilman Griffith?
Here and at home.
Councilman Thompson?
Here and at home.
And Council President Copeland?
Here and at home. Legislation and Public Works?
Thank you, Madam President. Item number one, I have an ordinance declaring an emergency situation at Prospect Avenue and Park Avenue. So moved.
Second. On the question?
Actually, I was reading through the legislation and there's just a minor word change that's needed. Because it states requiring repair of sinkholes and a sanitary sewer line. And it should be a storm sewer line.
Okay, so Mr. Clerk, you have the original?
Yes, ma'am.
Legislation?
Yes, ma'am.
So I can identify the three locations where it needs to be corrected?
Yes, please.
So in the first whereas, about three words. Yeah, three words from the end of that whereas.
Yes.
It says repair of sinkholes and a sanitary sewer line. Instead of sanitary, it should say storm.
Mm-hmm, and says storm?
Yeah, it should say sinkholes and a storm sewer line.
So noted.
And in section, in section two, the same thing at the very end of the section. Instead of sanitary sewer line, it should say storm sewer line.
In the second whereas?
Section two.
Section two, thank you, got it. And to be, mm-hmm, got it.
Storm sewer instead of sanitary sewer. And then section three, in the second line, again, it says sinkholes and sanitary sewer line. It should say storm instead of sanitary. And it's just in those three locations.
Right, three changes initialled, so done, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
No.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson? Councilman Thompson, can you hear me all right?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
I said aye, can you hear me? Aye.
I got you, yes, sir. I have, thank you. And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number two, I have an ordinance declaring an emergency situation at 435 South 9th Avenue. So moved.
Second, I'm sorry.
On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
No.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Human Resources? Excuse me.
Thank you. I'm trying to make sure that this pulls up the same. I have an ordinance for the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Westchester County Department of Senior Programs and Services for the State Transportation Program. So moved.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Copeland?
I have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Westchester County Department of Senior Programs and Services for the Information and Assistance Services under Title 3B of the Old Americans Act. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
I have a question, if I may, Madam President?
Yes.
So in the legislation, I was a little confused about the amount in section two where it says the aforementioned funds in the amount of $13,533 would be accounted for in a particular revenue code. I understand that's the city's matching funds, but wouldn't that be in the appropriations code? Or should that number be the amount that is being provided by? I think there's a grant or is it by the county?
Corp Counsel?
I'm just confused by the number.
Did you have a question?
No, I didn't prepare this, so I don't know. You know, I'm not prepared to answer any of these last-minute questions. I, you know, I had somebody prepare the agenda for me, so I don't know the answer to that question.
Councilman Thompson, what's your pleasure? Or can you answer the question?
Yeah, I can read. Would you like me to read the entire ordinance out so we can grasp and understand it?
Councilwoman Duarte?
That's fine, you can read it out.
Okay, Councilman Thompson?
Hold on, let me pull it up.
Also read it if you like, sir.
You know, actually, I think I just, I just read it. You can go ahead and read it for the record. I think I just clarified it for myself, though. All right, but just to read it out.
You'd like me to read it, Ms. Doc?
Yes, yes, please.
Yeah, sure. An ordinance authorizing, this is item number four. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Westchester County Department of Senior Programs and Services for Information and Assistance Services under Title 3B, as in boy, of the Older Americans Act. Whereas by letter, the Commissioner of the Department of Recreation has requested legislation authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Westchester County Department of Senior Programs and Services for Information and Assistance Services under Title 3B of the Older Americans Act. And whereas the aforementioned agreement will be in the amount of $19,474, the city matching funds of $13,533 for a total amount of $33,007.00 for the contract period of January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020. Now, therefore, the City of Mount Vernon in City Council convened, does hereby ordain and enact: Section 1, the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with the Westchester County Department of Senior Programs and Services for Information and Assistance Services under the Title 3B of the Older Americans Act. Section 2, the aforementioned funds in the amount of $13,533 for Information and Assistance Services under Title 3B are to be accounted for in revenue code A as in Apple 4803.1 to provide for an appropriation in budget code A as in Apple 3773.101 and A as in Apple 6773.458. Okay, the Department of Recreation's 2020 budget. Section 3, the ordinance shall take effect upon its approval by the Board of Estimate and Contract. Thus reads the ordinance.
Okay, any other questions or roll call?
The city, I'm sorry, just to clarify. The city matching amount for $13,533 is what is seen, she is, or what is stated to be accounted for in that revenue code.
Appropriation.
Right. But that revenue code, shouldn't that revenue code represent the $19,474 for the program?
Just the matching funds?
Councilman Thompson? Yes.
Just the matching funds for the $13,533.
Roll call, number four?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
I have an ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds within the youth borough, so moved.
Second.
On the question?
If I may, Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I was just a little confused because in the first line, which transferring the amount of $11,000, the budget code that's referenced is labeled as community worker aid. But in the instance of the $5,000, it lists the same budget code, but labels it differently. So I was just a little confused. As to why, you know, I don't know if, I think the budget codes might have been switched, I don't know.
Councilman Thompson?
That looks like it needs some clarification.
I'm not sure if that budget code has a typo because both of those budget codes do have for the part-time salary and wages as well as the community worker aid. I'm not sure if those are supposed to be on the same budget code. However, those funds do need to be transferred for those operations.
Can I look at the budget?
One, one second. Does someone have, do you have a copy of the budget?
A copy of those pertinent budget accounts were included with the referral letter. So those codes refer to a salary line. And she's specifically referring to a position in that salary detail.
So my question is, why isn't it consistent? If it's code A 7312101, community worker aid, why is it then labeled as part-time salaries and wages in the second line? Why isn't that consistent? I guess that's my question.
Well, all the, the budget codes have various different positions allocated to them. All of, all of the budget codes are like that.
I believe that 7312, go ahead, Corp Counsel, you can.
Go ahead, you go ahead.
I was gonna say, I believe that community worker aid is underneath 7312.101 because it is a part-time position.
Okay.
They could have really just put part-time for both, but.
Right, that's what I'm wondering. Why, you know, it just seems a little.
Well, no, no, it's specific to that position. So if you look at the salary detail, which for a budget code A 7312.101, you'll see community worker aid listed as well as part-time salaries and wages, as well as other positions. And the same goes for the 7311.101. So those two are two different salary lines. And within the detail are those positions. So she's asking to move money from one salary line to another salary line and specifically appropriating it from one position to another position.
Okay, I mean, it's not a big deal. Thank you, thank you so much, Councilwoman.
I don't, I had the same confusion and I had to go back myself, so I understand the question.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions on this piece of number?
It wasn't a side, so I won't bother.
Okay, roll call on number five?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Public Safety and Codes?
Wait, I have one more.
There's one more, Madam President. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Sherman Carrigan, PMI, ICR, CSSMI, OSHA, 500, so moved.
Second.
On the question?
If I may, Madam President, this kind of confused me. Because this is asking for the training of, I think, eight young people in this OSHA training to be done by June 30th for $15,000. That was my understanding as I read this ordinance. And that seems, first, it seemed a little rushed to me. I don't know how it would be accomplished. And so I'm just wondering if the chairperson can add any clarity to this because it spoke specifically to the money being spent by June 30th and eight people being trained, and it lists what they have to be trained in. And I'm wondering how that would be accomplished in this very short timeframe.
Yes, those funds, they were supposed to be allotted for that training. It seems like the time is approaching fastly. However, it's a necessity with the amount of people we have out in those specific departments. And it can be done. It does seem like it's rushed, but it can be done in a timely fashion.
Madam President, if I may. So the ordinance specifically, and I'm reading it on my phone, but it specifically calls, this is workforce development. And it says OSHA 30 and 80-hour levels of carpentry trades for eight youth, right? And the training is to be included, to include safety and reporting, education, construction math, building materials, reading blueprints and floor systems, wall and ceiling framing, roof framing, reinforced materials, window doors, and basic stairs layer. How's that gonna get done in, like, I don't know, six weeks?
Well, first off, it says July 1st, 2019.
No, that's when it should have started, right? That's when, that's when the contract.
That's when the grant, that's what the grant period is.
Yeah, that was the grant.
It's July 1st, the grant period began July 1st, 2019. And it goes to June 30th, 2020.
2020, yes. That's, that's the, those are the dates. But of course, during the pandemic that we're occurring, I'm sure they'll give us a grace period with that.
So in that case, because this is grant funding, Madam President, if I may.
Did anybody else have any questions on this piece of legislation? Okay, continue, Councilwoman.
Thank you so much, Madam President. So, you know, I'm just wondering, right? We understand the pandemic, we understand the limitations of that, but this is grant funding. And grants are very specific, right? That's where they have the specific dates. So if we were going to operate outside of those dates or not meet the grant criteria, I mean, it seems like we should rush. It seems like we should be making the argument to the grantors that, given the pandemic, given everything that's going on, we would want to extend the time and perhaps run the program through a different period. But to rush to get this, I just don't understand, so.
I think the period is gonna be extended, but they have to start at some point. As someone who has the OSHA card myself and took a two-week training, so you can, it can be done.
I understand.
Any other?
At this point, many of the programs blew it and the grantors and the grantees are trying to push things forward or at least be prepared to do so in the future. So that's probably what's going on here.
Any other questions? Roll call on number six.
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
No.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Public Safety and Codes?
Thank you, Madam President. So I have an ordinance proclaiming May 4th through the 10th, 2020, as the City of Mount Vernon Emotional Wellness Week. So moved.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you. Finance and Planning?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a resolution appointing Isabel Suspiro as a member of the Board of Assessment Review of the City of Mount Vernon. So moved.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
I have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an application for the correction to the year 2018 City Tax Bill and directing the Controller to issue a refund. So moved.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Copeland?
Aye.
I have an ordinance of the City of Mount Vernon City Council regarding the adoption of the rezoning process amendment. So moved.
Second.
On the question? You have a question?
I do have a question, yes.
Go ahead.
This was recommended to several boards for feedback and the County Planning Board did send some feedback and I don't see that updated in this version. So I don't know if that was reviewed, incorporated.
Their comments were in our last packet, I believe, and they have been noted.
They're in section, it looks like section six?
Yeah, it was specific to the timeframe and, I had it denoted here. Very long. Section 5, letter E. And one question I have is that the timeframes seem to be reduced from, it was originally 30 days. Now it's, in this legislation, the amendment is recommending 21 days. And I was just unsure what was the rationale behind reducing it to 21 days.
Councilman Griffith?
I can't tell you off the top. I mean, this has been the same standing legislation that we've had in our packets for months, so. Right, so I'm not, you know.
Right, I know, and we did review this back in December. I'm just rereading it and I'm asking the question.
I can't give you that answer. I'm not sure why it was changed to 21. I'm sure there was a reason when we had our land use attorney available to us. All of this was reviewed. So, I mean, if we do get additional feedback from the County Planning Board after this inception, of course, as a former member of the Westchester County Planning Board, if we want to change that date to 30 days, even 35 days to make sure it encompasses a whole month, I'm sure we can do that.
Madam President, if I may?
Sure, yes.
Just to support what Councilwoman Duarte is saying, I mean, I don't understand the change myself. And I'm thinking that that's one change that we wouldn't want to reflect because it's reducing the response time. So could we change this legislation back to 30 days?
Councilman Griffith?
I wouldn't recommend doing that without speaking to our council. I really don't know the basis of how we got to 21. Again, if it causes a problem to the County Planning Board, we can, I can call Norma Drummond tomorrow morning and we can revise it at the next meeting with no issue.
But I think it's not so much about the, sorry, Madam President. It's not so much about the, our council as it is the City Council itself, right? Seeing that we have to pass it and we have to be comfortable with it. And, you know, it would be good to hear what the rationale is to change it, to reduce the time.
Well, if we had our land use attorneys still available to us, I would be happy to ask them that, right? But I'm sure there was a basis for the 21. I can't speak to the exact knowledge of why is 21 and how that works in this regard. But again, we can, we can change it. I mean, as a member of.
Couldn't we ask the planning? I'm sorry, William Long's title is escaping me. Our city planner, city planning administrator?
Plan administrator.
He's not here now, so this is stuff we could have done before the night of the meeting. So again, since it is referring to the Westchester County Planning Board that meets once a month, I agree with you that maybe 30 days may be the number. But in lieu of us having this legislation for months, I say let's move on it. And if we have to change it, we will. It's just a matter of making a phone call to the Commissioner.
I would rather, sorry, Madam President. And I would rather have it changed before we vote.
Well, what are we changing it for? What is your basis?
Why was it changed in the first place?
I don't know.
Yeah, council persons through the chair, one at a time.
Sorry, Madam President.
I can't, and yeah, Councilman Thompson will give you a chance to think about it. Go ahead, Councilman Thompson.
I'm just looking at the ordinance here and it's, it's 21 days and no less than 10 days prior to the public hearing. So that's, isn't that still giving us our time? You're looking for the 30 days, right? So if you look at the ordinance here, it says, "The respective municipality as the owners of the record within a distance of 200 feet from the perimeter of the subject property, no more than 21 days and no less than 10 days prior to the public hearing." So if you're, if you're looking at this, this is. So if you, if you're looking at this, this is actually, um, thirty-one days in total.
No.
No.
Councilman, uh.
My understanding.
It, 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 it talks to the public hearing, right?
Yes, yeah.
So the, the twenty, so th- thank you, right? So now it, now it's clearer to me. The twenty-one days and the ten days is so that the, the, the notice isn't so far before the public hearing that people forget to react to it. This is a zone. It has to be within the twenty-one and the ten days before the public hearing so that people have a recent notice for the public hearing. Understand the intent of the twenty-one and ten days.
I gather the reason you don't see thirty days and you see twenty-one days now is so you can get everything done and if there are any hiccups or any problems, it has to be rectified before that ten days before the hearing. So in actuality, there's a thirty-one day, um, timeframe. So we won't be losing out any time.
Let, let me, Madam President, if I may.
Councilman Griffith, yes.
So again, I wanna, I wanna be very clear. It's the, it's, it is the, um, the period in between the twenty-one days and the ten days. It is an eleven-day window to get the notice to people that there is a public hearing. Right? If you read it, the clerk shall forward copies with the notice of public hearing to the county planning board. Right? So it's just to let them know that the hearing is gonna happen between, in, within this ten days or eleven days.
So, if I may, Madam President.
Yes.
Um, so the section on the public hearing is, is specific to that and, and I understand that. The section with regards to, um, so section five refers to the referrals for review and report and it talks about all of the boards that the application would be referred to, to report back to the council, um, one of which is the Westchester County Planning Board um, and any adjacent municipalities. So there in that statement, it says no more than twenty-one days and no less than the ten days um, prior to any public hearing, the clerk shall forward copies of the proposed amendment with the notice of the public hearing to the county planning board. And I think the concern that they had was that the amendment should be referred to the county planning board as soon as we have it and not, um, so if we have it more than the twenty-one days from when we set a public hearing, that that should be forwarded to
As soon as.
County Planning Board as soon as possible. Was the, the concern I understood from to the county planning commissioner.
Well, that, but that's out, Madam President, if I may.
Councilman Griffith, yes.
That is outside the scope of what the intent of section E is.
So what is the intent of section E under section, um, five for referrals for review and report?
I mean, it, but you, you're invoking a different notice, right? So this notice clearly says that they want it set in this window so that people can have the notice right before the meeting. So it, it doesn't procure, preclude anybody from sending the notice as soon as it comes. This is to say that you have to have the notice between in this window. That's, that's why there's twenty-one and ten.
Yeah, but I think, I feel like we're talking about two different things.
Right, exactly.
The notice to the, for the public hearing. And then there's the referral for review and report to these other, um, boards that, um, that is specific in section five, so, um.
So is your concern that you should give more notice to, um, Westchester Planning Board? Because that is the referral time. That's not the public notice time. That's the time that you need to get it to Westchester County Planning Board and adjacent municipalities. And it's probably in line with what Westchester County Planning Board has identified as an appropriate amount of time.
And, and that's why I'm saying.
You don't even get ours half of the time.
And that's why I'm saying, if we need to revise it from the legality of what's here now, we need to review that. But for now, this was reviewed by our land use attorneys and it's sound.
Yeah, I, I had the same question. I mean, it was held, I think, the last time we voted and I had a similar question. That was my note as well. Was this change in the date, um, in the timeframe, you know, that was a concern for me.
Did you have any other concerns with any of the other pieces of the legislation?
No, that was the, yeah, no.
You mean this, this particular piece?
It, I'm, 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 I'm concerned that the council is concerned about our notice to other agencies, but the beef of the legislation to how we're gonna be invoking change within our own city.
No, no, I mean, that was my concern, was, was, was the notification here to the, right?
But that's not what the issue is.
That's not, that's not what.
With Westchester.
No, no, but they get two different issues.
There's two issues.
Two different issues.
Person at a time. Councilwoman Parkinson, then.
There are two separate.
Finish.
Right.
Yeah, one has to do with when the, the, the county board is notified and one has to do with how much time is given to the community to be notified, right? And that was my main concern, was the, was the, was the reduction in the time for the community.
But I think, oh, corporate's counsel, you finished, then I'll, then I'll say.
I'm, I'm finished. I'm, I'm finished. What, the discussion that I heard was about five E and the referral to the county was the question, as I understood it. Uh, the count, the council obviously can make whatever kinds of times they wanna notice to the public. You can notice the public as soon as you get it. I mean, there's various kinds of things you could do for yourself. But the discussion that I understood it related to section five E, which is to Westchester County Planning Board and adjacent municipalities. And we always make best efforts to get, uh, the stuff out as much as possible. Our biggest concern is not getting it from other communities. They're not similarly responding and giving us the information in a timely fashion and we recently took steps to address that.
And the, the only thing I was gonna say is the other issue is when, when we send it out like thirty days beforehand, then the public gets, oh, you sent it so long ago, now I forgot about it. So we're d- darned if we do and we're darned if we don't. I mean, even, I, I, I recall even when we were still meeting in the chambers, when people came in, oh, well, I got that notice so long ago, it had slipped my mind. So the shorter window I, I would think would be better, cause it's closer to the date of the public hearing, but.
And if.
Listen, if we do a better job at putting.
That was the whole purpose. That's why the land use council came up with it.
Right. And if we do a good job at putting stuff on our website, no matter when we notice and keep the notices on the website, uh, those members of the public that are really interested in that stuff can go to the website at any period of time after you do the initial release.
Uh, any other questions on this, um, legislation?
I will, I would just would like to say, I, I still like for it to be absolutely moved. I would like to say that item E does refer to the New York State General Municipal Law, which, um, clearly talks to, um, abutting municipalities notification. So again, I say, if it, there's a need to change it and if we do need to flex that, we can, but I have a feeling that these dates, um, and these timelines are based on another, uh, um, prerequisite and it may be within the New York State Municipal Law. And if, and if we can extend it, I have no problems doing that. I'll, in the morning, I'll make a phone call to Norma Drummond to see if this is a really, and we can modify it at the next meeting. It's not, it's not an issue in that regard.
I can't, I, I tend to agree with you, Councilman, um, Griffith. There's a reason why land use council, who we, you know, we know very well, um, use those dates. They didn't, I'm sure they didn't just pull them out of the sky.
Okay, let's see, what number is this one? Roll call on number.
Number ten.
Ten.
Councilwoman Duarte. I'm sorry, please repeat. Um, you're on mute. I'll help you. Thank you.
No, I, I.
Thank you, ma'am. And Councilwoman Parkinson?
I'm gonna abstain.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Griffith.
You have to say.
Yeah, so, um, I'm abstaining. I'll wait until Councilman Griffith comes back. And if there's, um, if there's an amendment, you know, I'd love to hear the reason, but I'm gonna abstain for now.
So you need further information?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, proceed, uh.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Griffith.
Hi.
Councilman Thompson.
Hi.
Council President Copeland.
Hi.
I have an ordinance of this, I'm on number eleven. I have an ordinance of the City of Mount Vernon City Council regarding the corrective legislation for site plan review. So moved.
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Councilwoman Duarte.
Hi.
Councilwoman Parkinson.
Hi.
Councilman Griffith.
Hi.
Councilman Thompson.
Hi.
Council President Copeland.
Hi.
Um, items twelve and thirteen, I'm asking to be held.
Is it, um.
I, I'm, I'm just wondering, Madam President, if, if, if Councilman Griffith will explain what's going on.
No, I will not.
Councilman Griffith?
Not at this time.
Oh. Perhaps he'll contact you after the.
Yeah, because this is something to help the public and, and we held it before, so I'm just wondering what the reason is. And I'd love to hear it. So I look forward to hearing from him.
And any other business to come before this body this evening? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Madam President.
Second.
Uh, roll call on adjournment.
Councilwoman Duarte.
Hi.
Councilwoman Parkinson.
Hi.
Councilman Griffith.
Hi.
Councilman Thompson.
Hi.
Council President Copeland.
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. Folks, we are adjourned at seven forty-seven PM.
I'll come in to sign the, I'll sign tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
I have a couple of morning meetings that I'll pop in.
That is most appreciated.
All right. Have a good evening. Stay safe, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, folks. All right. Travel safe. Stay safe.